I'd like to call the village board meeting to order tonight on October 20th, and ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Manganaro?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Gilbert?
Here.
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Zick?
Here.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci? President Protam Schwingback?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum tonight, and we do not have any minutes to approve tonight. So, the next item on the agenda is our accounts payable, and I will call on trustee Labads.
Thank you, President Protam Schwingback. Got the name right. I move approval of the warrant register with a check date of October 15th, 2025, in the amount of $5,592,672.80.
Second.
Motion by trustee Labads, second by trustee Zick. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Manganaro?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
President Protam Schwingback?
Yes.
We have no recognitions or communications tonight. Also, no public hearing. I don't have any blue cards. Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move to the consent agenda. Are there any trustees that want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a trustee to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda at this time?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by trustee Labads, second by trustee Santa Maria. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
Trustee Manganaro?
Aye.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
President Protam Schwingback?
Yes.
So, new business tonight. The first item of new business is a proposed new collective bargaining agreement with the union representing the village's police department. I would ask Mayor Reckless if you have a presentation.
Thank you, President Protam Schwingback. See, it just rolls off the tongue. So, our patrol officers and our police department are represented by the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, and our current contract with the union expires December 31st of this year. I am happy to report that management has reached an agreement with the union on a one-year extension of the existing agreement, with the only changes being a cost of living adjustment of 3%, an increase to the employee contribution on insurance that would go into effect for the open enrollment period that occurs next fall, and the introduction of a pilot program for a new staffing schedule that would be going to affect the beginning of the year. And the new schedule is really the most significant item there. It's a result of some very positive collaboration between department management and union leadership. The current schedule of six, eight-and-a-half-hour days on and three days off has been in effect for a number of years. But both management and the union were committed to explore the development of a new schedule that could achieve better work-life integration for our employees while still maintaining the high-quality services that our community is accustomed to. The new schedule attempts to provide that balance. And as you all know, recruitment in law enforcement remains a challenge. Despite the fact that we've hired eight new officers in the past year with other candidates in review, vacancies still exist in our department and are hard to fill in the industry at this time. And so, we want to make sure that we can provide the very best situation for both our current employees and prospective employees, given the difficult work that we ask them to engage in. Under the new concept, employees would work nine-hour days, but would work five days on and three days off. Aside from the benefits to our employees and their families, the schedule will allow better overlap during shift changes so that supervisors can better prepare their teams for the work of the upcoming shift and allow employees to follow up on important administrative items after their shift concludes. So, it has operational benefits, and obviously, it makes it a little bit easier for our employees, too. And so, I really want to commend the management team made up of deputy village manager Diana McCula, director of human resources Kelly Livingston, and deputy police chief Greg Zernacki, as well as the union bargaining team led by union president Dan Bell, as well as Kevin Adams, Tom Janchitz, Matt Williams, Sean O'Brien, Job Vincent, and Taren Gunbar. Both groups worked together transparently and creatively to achieve this agreement, and I think it will benefit both our employees and the village. And so, staff wholeheartedly recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police.
Thank you, Randy, and thanks to the entire staff. I know how important this is to our village and how important the police department is. So, I'm glad we could get this done. Are there any questions, anyone on the board? Trustee Labads?
Yes, just a quick question and a thank you. First, I'll do the thank you to everyone involved. I know it's a lot of work going into bargaining, and I think this is just wonderful that you were able to accomplish this so smoothly. So, thank you all for that. And my quick question is, when does the change in the schedule start? January?
February.
February.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I was wondering.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that has a...
President Protam Schwingback, I do have a comment. I'd just like to echo trustee Labad's words of congratulations and thanks to everyone involved. It happens that I am both attending the Citizens Police Academy right now and was at the open house on Saturday. I've had a chance to talk to a good number of folks. It seems like within the police force, especially the hours is very well received. I appreciate the MAP leadership for the approach. The collaboration is the word that I've heard over and over again, and I think it's something that I really, really appreciate about the leadership of this village, about the folks who are working so hard to make it the great place that it is. And again, thank you, and I am very hopeful also that this will help as a recruitment and retention tool. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience that has any questions on this? Seeing none, is there a motion? Trustee Labads?
Thank you. I would be happy to move approval of the resolution authorizing execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the village of Arlington Heights and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Arlington Heights, Chapter 510, with an expiration date of December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion by trustee Labads, second by trustee Dunnington. Will the clerk call the roll?
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
Trustee Manganaro?
Aye.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
President Protam Schwingback?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you again for all your hard work. The second item tonight is a proposed preliminary plat of subdivision and variations for the property located at 1920 North Chestnut Avenue. Is the petitioner here?
Yes, yes.
If you could come up and just state your name.
Yes. My name's Scott Neerman. I'm a consultant for Clem Development, who's the petitioner. The principal of Clem Development, Vitaly Clem, is here, and his attorney, Bruce Livnick, is also here.
Do you have a presentation tonight? Or do you want to tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
I would love to. Thank you.
Please proceed.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your consideration, and also to the staff for their guidance and consideration and assistance. Mr. Clem is proposing a subdivision of a 1.14-acre lot, bounded by Chestnut on the east and Walnut on the west. He's proposing to subdivide it into four lots. Three residential lots plus one smaller detention lot. The one lot that faces Chestnut Street, he's requesting a variance of the front yard setback from 40 feet to 25 feet. For the detention pond, also facing Chestnut, he's requesting two variances. One for a width of 60 feet from 70 feet, and a lot size smaller than what's required, 8,800 feet. I'll address the detention pond first. That seems to be probably the simplest. Due to the topography of the area, and the subject lot being lower in elevation than the surrounding neighborhood, it cannot take advantage of the Walnut Lad detention facility and is required to provide its own detention. So, working through with the engineering department, the 60-foot-by-145-foot lot is sufficiently, substantially sufficient, to handle the detention of the remaining of the subdivision. But it will also help drain the neighboring lots. That's pretty straightforward. Lot 1 facing Chestnut Street, we're requesting a 25-foot setback from the required 40-foot setback. The ordinance section requires an average of the prevailing setbacks along the west side of Chestnut Street. The majority of the lots on West Chestnut Street are what I'll call legacy lots. They're large lots, almost, well, more, a couple of them being more than an acre in size. The smaller ones are half acres in size. But with houses that are set back in the middle of the lot, some of the houses are 90 feet from Chestnut Street. Some of them are, you know, 75 feet. But the average, I think, is 80 feet along the west side of Chestnut Street. The ordinance requires, in that case, a 40-foot setback. We're looking for 25 feet. The prevailing depth of the front lots in the neighborhood range between 20 and 25, except for the two adjoining lots to the subject, and a few of the other ones farther south towards Palatine Road. In all other respects, the lot 1 facing Chestnut Street will conform to R2 zoning. And again, the prevailing setbacks in the neighborhood are 20 to 25 feet. Clem believes, Clem Development believes, that the instances of the unique circumstances are, you know, again, that the majority of the lots on the west side of Chestnut Street have not been platted. There is no established front yard setback. And then, the other unique circumstance is that the whole lot sits lower and can't, you know, take advantage of the Walnut Lad detention pond. So, it needs to provide its own detention. And with the, you know, the two Walnut Street-facing lots, the Chestnut Street residential lot, and the pond, the subdivision seems to work, and frankly, will give him an opportune to, you know, make good use of the property. Also, I'd like to point out that the six contingencies that were attached to the plan commission recommendation were acceptable. But that's all I have. I'm open for questions.
Okay. Well, before we do that, manager Reckless, Emily, you're going to make the presentation tonight?
Yes. All right, thank you. So, the petitioner's done an excellent job summarizing the request. I'll try to move through the presentation quickly. As he mentioned, this is a request for a preliminary plat of subdivision with variations for Chestnut Wood subdivision. This preliminary approval would give the developer some assurances that the subdivision is acceptable to the board, but they would be required to come back for final plat before they could submit for building permits. As the petitioner indicated, the property is located at 1920 Chestnut Avenue. It's a little over one acre in size, and it is currently zoned R2. The petitioner is requesting the preliminary plat of subdivision along with multiple variations. As he indicated, the variations are in relation to a front yard setback and to lot width and lot area for two of the lots. This is an overlay of the proposed subdivision with some possible building footprints. These aren't necessarily what the building footprints will look like, but this is an example for illustrative purposes. So, you can see that to the west would be two homes, and then to the east would be one larger home, as that lot is slightly larger. And then, the lot that you see that is just the rectangular box would be the detention lot. This is the breakdown of the lot boundaries. Lot 2 is where there is a request for the lot width and lot area reduction, as well as in Lot 1. And then, Lot 1 is where that front setback variation is requested. And as the petitioner indicated, the average of the block face, which is what our setback is based on, is actually 80 feet. But there is a provision in the code that says for the R2 district, it's the average of the block face, but no more than 40 feet. So, it is reduced down to a 40-foot requirement, even though the average currently on that particular block is 80 feet. Again, this is another picture of the proposed site improvements. Along with the subdivision, there are going to be some required right-of-way improvements along Chestnut and Walnut Avenue, along with the detention basin, which eventually would be conveyed to the village, and we would maintain that. As the petitioner indicated, the plan commission did consider this preliminary plat of subdivision request, and they did recommend approval of the plat, subject to six conditions. Those conditions you see listed here on the slide are pretty standard conditions for subdivisions, so nothing unusual. There were two comments that the plan commission did make. A few plan commissioners felt it was worth noting, but they did not collectively feel it was appropriate to add it as a condition. But we did want to share this with you. One is that, under our subdivision code, subdivision requires the installation of a sidewalk. And there were a couple of plan commissioners that expressed some concerns about installing the sidewalk when it would not connect to the north or south to other sidewalks. So, while staff's preference is that the sidewalk is installed now, we certainly are amenable to exploring and working with the engineering department to come up with an agreement where that could potentially be installed later. That would depend on if that's something that the village board is interested in. Would be something we would look at as part of the final plat of subdivision, but certainly is a possibility. But again, right now, the code requires it be installed. And then, the second comment that the plan commission made was with regard to Lot 1, and let me go back to Lot 1 here so you can see. There was one resident who expressed concern about the installation of a privacy fence along... Initially, the concern was along the detention lot. The petitioner, or excuse me, the resident that expressed a concern actually lives adjacent to the detention lot. So, this would not impact them. But they expressed the concern for the resident who lives to the north and potentially could be impacted by Lot 1 installing a privacy fence, which may, from the perspective of that home, appear to be in their front yard, because that home is set further back. So, again, that was just a comment by a resident. The plan commission wanted to make sure we shared that with the village board, but they did not want to require a condition that should the future Lot 1 owner want to put a privacy fence in, they notify the adjacent property owner. That's not something we would typically require. So, the motion that is before the board this evening is the motion to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting the zoning relief for consideration at a future meeting for a preliminary plat of subdivision for three residential lots and one dedicated stormwater detention lot, and the zoning variations requested, subject to the recommended conditions set forth in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Good presentation. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll go.
Oh, you go, Steve Zick.
Okay, I guess I'm going. The questions that I've got really have to do with, you know, some of the requirements that we have. And I'm just, you know, driving by there, and I don't live too far away from there, and I know some people that live around there. The fact that it's the 25 feet, it's going to be weird-looking, because the house just to the north of it, as you said, the two houses to the south of it are, what, 70 to 80 feet back, I think, is what we're figuring. And then, there's that new house that's being built just to the north of it, correct? And that looks like it's probably the 40 or 50 feet. I'm curious to the reason, and I did read this stuff, but I'd kind of like to hear the reason for wanting to have it pulled up that far.
Well, it would conform to the majority of the homes in the neighborhood. That's number one. Two, to be frank, I think to allow the developer to make some return on the investment, he would need a house that would be, you know, of the size that is shown on the preliminary drawing. That's the reasons. And I'd also have to mention at the point that Mr. Clem has talked to the owner to the south. And the owner to the south, he's satisfied now. And he doesn't have any objection, I am told, to the project.
If I could just add, this image that I put up on the screen is a front setback exhibit. So, the red line shows you the existing front setbacks along this block. What is not visible in this particular image is the setback across the street, so across from Chestnut, and also across from Walnut. So, the homes across the street from Chestnut are mostly around the 20 to 25-foot setback, as well as across the street on Walnut, too. And so, what staff envisions is that ultimately, these lots, which are all about an acre in size, many of them are anticipated to redevelop over time. Now, whether that's five years, or 15 years, or 30 years, but they're quite large lots. And so, and they are, as you can see with this proposal, potentially could be subdivided into four lots. And then, we would expect that the front setback would mirror the rest of the neighborhood at the 25 feet. So, while initially, when that first home is built, it might seem out of place. Over time, it will match the rest of the existing neighborhood, and that is why staff was supportive of the request.
So, when you're looking at 1920 here, one is going to be just next to, was it 2,000? I'm seeing the address up there. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then, the detention pond is going to be just south of that, in between what's built at 1920 and, was it 1916?
So, 1920 is the lot that's going to be subdivided? So, the 1916 is the lot to the south of it? So, the detention lot will border Lot 1916?
So, it'll be in between that building that's there?
Correct. The new home with the 25-foot setback will have the detention lot, and then, it would border 1916 Chestnut.
Okay.
And the detention lot, of course, is going to be landscaped to conform to the rest of the neighborhood. So, there's a nice buffer between Mr. Sinclair's house and the subject property and Lot 1 with that house.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm set aside with that. Thank you both very much. Can you go back to that previous one? So, the other question just has to do with the sidewalk, because you can see the sidewalk there on the east side of Chestnut there. And we're, once they build a sidewalk, it's only going to be on 1920, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any plans, any future plans? I understand the other neighbors there do not have to put anything in right now. Do we have any plans of actually putting sidewalks in there to complete this thing so it's not just kind of hanging out there?
I believe our practice is just to require it at time of subdivision. So, we would not be looking for the village to do that extension at this point in time. It would be on a lot-by-lot basis.
Okay. So, I would be in favor of us actually doing something to, where we don't have to put that in at that point, because it's, again, I know it's not a real professional word, but it's just going to look weird to me, you know, with this sidewalk that's just kind of hanging out in there. So, I would be more than willing to say that it's okay if we discuss something so we don't have to do that this time. I'm done, thank you.
Yeah, Randy?
If I could, I was just going to comment on trustee Zick's comment. I mean, legally, there are certainly ways to ensure that that sidewalk is built, you know, at the appropriate time. That's not really a question. There's a lot of creative ways to do that. The only thing that I think staff would point out is that, in our experience, practically, it can be difficult, and this is why, is you may have an owner or two later of this particular house before they have to build it. And they may not, you know, they may have signed a million documents at a closing, one of which is saying you've got to put this sidewalk in. But if they've lived there for 10 years, and then, all of a sudden, they get a letter from the village saying, hey, we're going to take part of your front yard away that you've had for 10 years, it sometimes is difficult. And there are lots of times when the village or board feels compelled to back off of it at that point. And it doesn't mean we have to, doesn't mean we can't. I'm just pointing out that that sometimes has been a practical challenge. But it's balanced with, as you say, the weirdness, and the weirdness is a thing.
Yeah, it just, so, it sounds like, though, we can do something legally, though, to where we don't have to require for this particular...
We can, what we can do is we can legally, we can do whatever we want. But there are mechanisms where we can require this now, but then, it's not built until, you know, whatever triggering thing we want to have, the redevelopment of the adjacent property, or X amount of years, or the redevelopment of X amount of the block. I mean, there's a lot of different things that you can do where that would happen. I mean, you can have the developer pay for it now, and then, you know, it's just put in later. You can have the new property owner, you know, in the future, pay for it. There's a lot of different things that you could do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zick. Trustee Manganaro?
I do have some questions, but I want to start by saying I support the project as it's been approved by plan commission and recommended by staff. I would be prepared to enter a motion, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
So, I would move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting the zone relief for consideration at a future board meeting for PC 24-018, a preliminary plat of subdivision for three residential lots and one dedicated stormwater detention lot, and the zoning variances requested. And subject to the recommended conditions, all is set forth in the agenda for tonight's board meeting.
Second.
Motion by trustee Manganaro, second by trustee Santa Maria. Any further questions? I have a...
I do, but I think those...
I do have a few questions, yeah. And it's mostly for my own understanding and education and... and getting a little bit about the history. The first one was, I noticed in the packet, and you called them legacy lots, and as I drove around up there and looked at the maps, that made it a whole lot more understandable about the whole situation, because it seems like what's proposed is very consistent with, if you zoom out two or three blocks, the rest of the neighborhood. And when was that area annexed? I understand it was unincorporated, and I wouldn't necessarily expect folks here to know, I didn't get a chance to put that question in this afternoon to be researched.
I don't know.
I don't know, we can find the answer, though.
Okay. And let you know. Like I said, I'm supporting the project, I just wanna understand a little bit more about the history, and I understand from reading is that those legacy lots were annexed, as they are, along with that portion of the village. The other thing that maybe I should've put in beforehand, there's that strip along Walnut Street, and the property owner, pardon me.
The spite strip?
Yeah.
The five-foot-wide spite strip?
Yeah. I do not understand that. It seems like it just really interferes with more development. I understand that it's been purchased for this, but I'd like to understand the purpose of that.
Control.
Explain it to me like I'm a 12-year-old with a driver's license.
Well, I'm sorta digressing here, but, control. In, when people develop lots, or people see things happening, they will, they'll convey a very narrow strip, in this case, five feet, just so they have a seat at the table, and they get approval rights. They, you know, whether it be the village, or the neighbors, or the person down the street, they're gonna, you know, they say, wow, what a marvelous place to develop something. Well, wait a minute, there's a five-foot strip going from, you know, five feet by 150, 200 feet, and so he's at the table, or they're at the table. It's control.
Thank you. And then lastly, for manager Recklos, you know, we have talked a bit about the floating sidewalk. Actually, I live about three blocks from here, and two of the fastest three ways to get home, I have to go by discontinuous sidewalks, so for me, it's just not a big deal. There's a lot of them in my neighborhood. But if we were to put something in place that required the developer to pay for it now, then how is that funding managed, as Director Rodman said, 15 years down the road, the next lot is subdivided?
You know, I mean, essentially, there's a lot of different ways, and Attorney Passman or Director Rodman can weigh in on this as well, but, you know, essentially, we would accept the amount that the improvement costs today, and, you know, that would go into, you know, village funds, and obviously, the cost of that's gonna go up, but, you know, we would, you know, that would be our money at that point, we'd earn interest on it, and so it would kinda come out in the wash.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gilbert?
Yeah, I think this is fantastic, I love the development aspect of this. I would just add that I believe that the Village Mount Prospect kinda operates in the same way, where if there's an issue with this type of a thing, they, you know, in terms of this floating sidewalk, that they actually address these when there are variances requested, or somebody gets a permit for something, and I think it works out well that way. I think to Randy's point, if we sit on it, and, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, then all of a sudden, we say, hey, that, we're putting a sidewalk there, people are like, what? You know, it creates a lot of problems that, you know, and it just looks bad. So I think that this is the appropriate way to handle it, and if we do grant this, having that floating sidewalk, I agree with Trustee Mangano, a floating sidewalk, to me, is just a sign of progress and things to come, so I have no problem seeing that whatsoever.
Thank you. Trustee LeBetz?
Thank you. I would agree with that. Like Trustee Mangano, I live in a neighborhood that also has a lot of floating sidewalks, although it's a different neighborhood, in the Hannah area, where, as homes have been redeveloped, from the old homes that were there, sidewalks have been put in, and when I walk in the neighborhood, well, sometimes I have to walk on the street, sometimes I get a sidewalk, sometimes I walk on the grass. So I think it's just not an unusual thing in my mind, so I'm supportive of the motion as made. Also, with the kind of weirdness, if you will, about the setback, I can also think of a number of areas in town where there's houses that are sort of inconsistently set back, and it's just maybe part of the charm of Arlington Heights makes us different, so I am very supportive of the, of the motion and the project. I did also drive around there this afternoon, just so I had a good feel for what it's like. It'd been a while since I'd been on Chestnut and Walnut, so I'm fine with this.
Thank you. Any other? Trustee Donison?
Thank you. I have a question about Walnut Street. I read that it's gonna be widened for this project, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, is that gonna go all the way to, is it LaSalle Street? Is that the name of it? LaSalle? Or is it just gonna be widened where this property is?
Well, Clem Development is responsible for widening Walnut Street in front of the two lots that face Walnut Street. So I'm, I don't know about the property to the north.
Okay. Would the village widen that portion?
Yeah, you know, I think, I don't have a solid answer for that, unfortunately, I can find out what the plan is for that. I think generally speaking, the roadways are, you know, is gonna be widened adjacent to, to make for a proper right-of-way adjacent to those properties. I think the idea behind the widening, if I'm not mistaken, is that we're trying to make the width kind of more standard than where we are, and so, without looking at it, I apologize, I just don't have that right in front of me.
Okay, 'cause otherwise, it seems like it would be narrow, and then it would get wide where this property is.
Right, right. I mean, it's one of those things we would try to time and make consistent with the rest of the area, is the basic idea, but I'd have to, I can, we'll find that out for you.
Okay, and then it seems like it would make sense to then put a sidewalk in that area as well?
Right, as long as we had the rights to do that and so forth, that would be, that would be the plan to have, would be to have standard rights-of-way in the area.
And the property to the north, I know, Mrs. Rodman, you indicated that in the future it could be redeveloped, and so the setback could change at that point, but it did look like that is a brand-new house that's under construction, do you know if that's true?
I think it is a newer home, and so the age of the homes in this area ranges pretty widely, and it's very difficult to predict when they might be redeveloped, but I do imagine there are some that will be there for some time.
Okay. I, I'm struggling with the setback. I, I think that the variation, variance for the detention pond is, is fine, but I think it appears that the homes on each side will be there for a long time, and so I do think that it looks odd to have two homes that are set so far back, and then one so close to the road. I know that it does go along with the rest of the street, but just in that block, I think that I personally wouldn't want to be in that situation with my home, with a, with a house, you know, with their backyard in my front yard, and a possible fence. So I'm struggling with approving that portion of the, of the project, but I think everything else is fine. I do agree with the sidewalk, that we should do it now, because I think that there could be issues later with trying to get that done, especially if someone does some kind of landscaping or something, and then they would be forced to rip that out at that time. So I'm just not sure about the 25-foot setback.
I was gonna say, I thought it looked like Mr. Clem might have wanted to say something with the, in addressing the setback. I saw a little movement earlier when he first, so it, they don't let me put you on the spot, but if you wanted to address that.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here. We're trying hard to, you know, to improve the neighborhood and bring some changes. Obviously, I think it's natural for everybody to oppose to changes, you know, because some people have been there for a longer time, whatever, but I've seen these houses, you know, like just you said, ma'am, all over Arlington Heights, and even in my area, you know, the houses having different setbacks, and actually, this is the charm, and I was talking to the neighbors, that, you know, we're gonna work with landscaping, and actually, if you look from the different perspective, they're gonna have more, more privacy, to be honest, because the house is gonna come in the front, and at this point, you're gonna have more privacy. So everything can be settled with landscaping, but then, you know, like if you look on the other side of the road, everybody has 20, 25 feet, you know, we're only talking about two houses, that's it, you know? So I would respect the rest of the neighborhood, which is, which is 90% with what you're seeing there. I talked to, I forgot, with Dan, from the, from north of my property, I'm sorry, south of my property.
Sinclair.
With Mr. Sinclair, he has plans to sell the property in future years, and he was talking about that, you know, he see that the property is gonna be kind of, is gonna have the same path with subdividing and having different properties. So I honestly think, not that from my perspective that I wanna build, but there are a couple of things. First of all, whoever's gonna buy the property, I want them to have the privacy in the back, and have like a bigger backyard, yeah? It's odd to have a big back, front yard, and then a very small backyard, you know? It's useless, yeah? There is no privacy for that, for any of those houses, if you have a small backyard, and you have a big front yard, that's one thing. But the other thing, like I said, you know, we definitely looking to improve that with the landscaping, and that's gonna give more privacy for the neighbors from right and left, you know? They're not gonna be exposed to the street, but they're gonna have privacy. Everybody wants privacy, yeah? So this is what I was talking to the neighbors, and they kind of understood my point, it's just, I think, every time you wanna bring something, change something, it's a natural thing to oppose, yeah? So, yeah, this is my point, you know, that we are looking to improve everything, and open to discussion, open to bring more landscaping, and make everybody happy, and just to plan this thing for the next 50 years, not for the next three years. The neighbor on the right, which is newer house, in the beginning, when I had that conversation, she was like, oh, I'm gonna flip this, you know, I don't want this, I don't like this, it's a old house, but now, you know, like, you know, I don't know, I had a couple of comments that, you know, they are not happy that the property is gonna have a smaller setback, yeah? But like I said, we are open to the landscaping, we are open to everything, I tried to have a conversation with both, I only talked to Mr. Sinclair, so he is happy about that. He doesn't oppose to this, and he's happy, we're gonna have the pond right there, and more landscaping to, to work the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The few questions that I had were answered, I drove around the neighborhood a couple of times, I'm excited to see what you're gonna bring to the design commission, as far as the design of the homes, but it's certainly gonna be an enormous improvement, because the, the existing home on that property is pretty dilapidated and rundown, so, I mean, it's definitely gonna improve the neighborhood, which I'm excited about.
Well, that's, that's my scope, to improve the neighborhood, especially, you know, with shortage of houses. I'm sure everybody, even the village, is gonna benefit to have their three houses, three families, three families to use the school, the roads, and to contribute through the village, you know? And like I said, by the end of the day, the third, the first lot, which is with 25-feet setback, you know, I don't want them to feel unsatisfied of that small backyard, okay? Because nobody wants to use a small backyard and have a big, huge front yard, you know? All the privacy is in the back, you know? People want privacy.
Right.
That's why, and, and when you look across the street, you know, everybody has this setback in between 20 and 25 feet, and I think once the property is gonna come there, it's kind of, it's gonna equal everything, and it's just only gonna leave two properties with legacy, but I don't see a problem, you know, those properties still gonna be there with the legacy and with the bigger front yard.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions on this project? Seeing none, I'd go back to the board, I know there was discussion about that sidewalk and, and what to do with that. We've got those six provisions on the recommendation, is there anyone that wants to add anything to that on the sidewalk?
I mean, as I mentioned, I would prefer, only as a petitioner, how do you feel about the, about the building of the sidewalk?
Honestly, I'll be happy to pay and not to have the sidewalk, yeah, just in perspective of landscaping, you know? It's gonna be odd to, to manage the landscaping, you know? Especially, like, if you look along the side where I'm building, you know, nobody has the pathway where the, what do you call it?
What, the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, yeah, and it's gonna be looking odd, from my experience, from the past, you know, when we built a sidewalk and nobody has it, it kind of looks odd, you know? I'll be happy to pay, and for the village to use the money, you know, and so they can decide later, you know? Especially, we have a sidewalk on the other side of the street, you know? So definitely, that's comfortable for everybody to use the sidewalk on the other side of the street, otherwise, let's say, we're gonna have the sidewalk for two houses, but you, everybody's using the sidewalk on the other side of the street, you know? So there's not gonna be, I don't see much positive things to have a sidewalk just for those houses, you know? It's not gonna look good, even for the landscaping and maintenance, you know? That's my feeling, yeah, but I'm, I'm open to, you know, to everything, yeah?
Okay, thank you. I mean, in light of that, and I respect, you know, the opinions of my three fellow trustees here, I know we do have, you know, other areas within the village that do have these floating sidewalks, and I've walked on them, and it's, it's always, I'm gonna use a weird word again, it's weird for me, you know, when I'm walking, and all of a sudden, I have to come off that sidewalk and go on, go on to it. In light of what we just heard here, I would really like to, where we added a motion or an amendment where we don't have to require that for right now, and to, and to, you know, take them up on the discussion of what to do from here.
Well, that was gonna be my question, is do we, can we add something in there, pay now, and do it later at some point down the road? We'd have to amend the motion.
Right, so probably, of course, there would need to be a motion, there is, there is a main motion on the floor, as you know, there'd have to be a motion to amend that motion, to, essentially, to waive the sidewalk requirement. Putting the sidewalk in is a provision of our subdivision ordinance, so it would have to be reflected as a variation, which, if that is the will of the board, we'll have that reflected in approval documents, if there is such a motion, if that is ultimately adopted.
And, and have the petitioner pay, pay now?
Yes, I didn't mean to omit that, that, again, I have to wait to hear if there is, I mean, I think, Trustee Zick, you're on the cusp of a motion, so, I don't wanna presume what it'll be, but I understand that is the contemplation.
I would be more than willing to make a motion, but I'm kind of getting the feeling here, I don't know if there's any, any other desire, you know, for my fellow trustees.
Trustee Gilbert?
Yeah, so my question would be, is, because this is a variance from the subdivision ordinance that we already have in place, what if, you know, this were put on the proverbial ice, but then in the meantime, other developments come along, and, long story short, we have one house with no sidewalks 15 years from now, with beautiful vegetation, that we require to be ripped out and torn up to complete the puzzle, per se, and I think that's where we would run into issues with that.
What's the will of the board? We have a motion and a second? Anything further?
Did we have a second?
We did.
Yes.
For the, for the main motion.
The main motion.
Oh, for the main motion, for the main motion, okay, yeah, and I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with the motion as it is.
As it is.
If there's no other will to go forward.
Nothing else? Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second, no questions from the audience, roll call.
Trustee, Trustee Mangano?
Trustee, trustee Mangue Nero?
Hi.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
President Protem Schwenbeck?
Yes. So, the motion carries, um, the final approval ordinance will be considered at the November third Village Board meeting. Uh, and we'll make it final then, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the last bit of new business is a proposed amendment to a planned unit development, a new special use permit and a variation for the property located at four West Rand Road. Is the petitioner present?
Good evening, uh, my name is Dana Aman, I'm, uh, the architectural project manager with the HOH Group, uh, architecture, architects and engineers. And we also have with, I also have with me this evening, one of the owners from Cargo Coffee. I will ask the, I'm prepared to walk through the presentation, but does, does the staff wanna walk through the presentation, or would you like me to?
We have our own presentation, you're welcome to present this, there is a clicker up there, you can push if you'd like to go through it.
Okay, go ahead. Sure, okay. So, this is located, uh, on the northwest, uh, corner, in, in the, uh, retail strip mall, on the northwest corner of Rand and, um, and Arlington Heights Road. Uh, this, uh, particular facility, or this particular Cargo Coffee that is being proposed, is located at the, um, uh, location of what is currently a vacant building. This was formerly the Olson Rug, uh, store. Um, basically, I, let me see here if I can do this without too much trouble. Real quickly, the, just going through the agenda, just wanted to present you with some project information for, uh, history on the prod, or, you know, basic, the prod, the basic project information. The reasoning that Cargo Coffee wants to go for the special use permit for a, um, uh, drive-through, uh, to be added to the, uh, to the building. Uh, we'll present some, uh, present the site demolition plan and proposed site plan that's been presented to the village staff, uh, the proposed parking plan, proposed drive-through signage plan. Uh, we have done the auto-turn analysis to, to validate that the fire engine number one fourteen size can go through, uh, the parking area without, uh, causing any issues, as well as the standard garbage truck. Uh, and we'll show those exhibits just for reference. We also have a landscape plan and a proposed, uh, just, uh, for visualization purpose, give you a chance to see also what the, uh, floor plan and what the inside of the facility would look like. Again, this is, uh, as I mentioned earlier, this is a currently vacant facility or a vacant building. Uh, this is the former Olson Rug, uh, outlet store, or retail store. Um, again, it's located in that, uh, retail strip area. Um, the idea is that, uh, they, the Cargo Coffee would like to turn this into a coffee shop, uh, with open seating. It also, nice, nice little benefit is adding in a couple of multipurpose co- conference rooms that can be, uh, used by patrons. Uh, it will be doing, uh, coffee and pastry sales, um, of their brand of coffee that they like to sell. The important thing to note is there is not going to be coffee brewing, uh, roasting coffee on the site. It's just, um, selling of coffee, eh, eh, only. Uh, typical office, or typical, uh, business operation hours, it's open every day of the week. Hours, six AM to ten PM, drive-through operation during the hours of operation. Uh, number of employees, ten, and then planned garbage pickup would be before hours of operation. Justification for this is, again, the, provide an opportunity for a new, another coffee shop that can, uh, serve, uh, clean refreshments. Again, nice thing is, has rentable coff- conference rooms, study spaces and open, uh, open, uh, it's called open dining, but it's really just for the coffee and pastries. Uh, the need for the drive-through is, again, to, uh, to fit in with, uh, the current sort of culture we have of people wanting to be able to have the drive-through convenience, to remain in their vehicles while minimizing. Uh, and again, part of the layout is to, of this particular, uh, site is to minimize congestion in the parking lot. Uh, and just to note, as you'll see in the exhibits, the drive-through is intended to be one-way circulation to better accommodate traffic flow without issues through the, through the actual parking lot. Uh, again, uh, typical is, uh, to this, uh, concern, uh, on behalf of the cargo is that the property, the, the business does not pro- uh, present any detrimental, uh, issues in terms of health, safety, morals, and genuine, general welfare of the persons residing or working in the vicinity of this, uh, of this, uh, store. And that also, it complies with the regulations and conditions specified in this ordinance for such use. I'm sure that, uh, most of you, uh, are aware of the property. Again, as I mentioned before, it's currently vacant, um, it's part of a larger parking area. It's an outlawed on a larger parking, uh, I'm sorry, a larger retail area, uh, sitting on the outlaw, uh, adjacent to Rand Road. Uh, the goal is to improve the parking, uh, in a couple of ways. One is to, um, if you look from the left to the right, we're adding some ADA parking spaces that are not currently there. And the other is to, uh, orient the parking and the driving, drive-through lanes such that you're progressing from left to right through the property, uh, in one direction and not in two directions. Again, this is a little cleaner image of the parking without some of the diagrammatic information. Again, showing that, uh, basically, the, we've worked with the village, uh, staff to determine the number of parking, minimum number of parking spaces needed, and we're meeting those. Uh, it's basically forty-five are required, we're providing forty-six parking spaces, uh, for the tenant, um, area. Number of ADA parking spaces required is two, with one, one being a van-accessible space, and we're providing those. And in addition, um, the queuing, uh, that you see, uh, of the cars, uh, queuing up to the, uh, to the drive-through window, uh, to, actually, to the actual cells, inner, the cells kiosk cells, self, we're required to have fourteen parking spaces, and we're providing, I mean, fourteen parking spaces, fourteen queuing spaces, and we're providing those, uh, spaces. Signage, you can begin to see, uh, on the left, uh, basically, if you were to study this in, in detail, we're providing signage that orients patrons in their vehicles from left to right, uh, one-way traffic only. Once you, once you, uh, enter the queuing area, it's one-way traffic, and you can see that the parking spaces themselves have been set at an angle so that it further enhance, eh, further reinforces the requirements along with the signage for one-way, uh, traffic from left to right through the, through the property. Uh, at the right, at the right image, you can begin to see, uh, on the southeast corner of the building, this, you can see where the queuing line begins with the, uh, with the inter- interactive, or not interactive, but with the, uh, menu board, uh, and the, and the speaker system. And then the cars queue up, um, be, from behind that, there's, again, four, spaces for fourteen cars to pu- queue up behind that, uh, behind that cells, uh, 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 menu board. And then they can pull forward, uh, cars, three cars can pull forward up to the drive-through window. This, this was an exhibit that was really very important to the, uh, village staff, and they've reviewed this. Um, again, this shows that a vehicle, Arlington Heights Fire Truck number two, which is a fire engine number one fourteen, can maneuver the site without causing any, uh, difficulty for the fire, uh, equipment. Same thing with the garbage truck. Standard garbage truck. Landscape plan, um, you will see on this that the, uh, lighter trees, the, the one, the trees and landscaping that's sort of in a lighter color are existing legacy plants, and we're, uh, the, the design is enhancing the landscaping to fit the landscaping ordinance, uh, adding more, uh, larger trees, uh, also screening, uh, some of the, uh, transformer equipment with, uh, with bushes and trees, and then, uh, salt, uh, tolerant plantings along Rand Road. This is an, uh, exhibit, just for your reference of what the, uh, inside would look like, at the top third of it. Uh, looking up on the exhibit, the top third, there's a, um, basically your sales area for selling of coffee and pastries. Then the back of the house area to the top above that, or plan north. And then plan the bottom half of the, or bottom two-thirds of the facility, uh, of the, uh, of the retail space is your, uh, open dining or open, uh, coffee and pastry, uh, area, uh, to, uh, to, uh, take the, to, uh, you know, to gather and to, uh, to, uh, have coffee and pastries. And then the nice thing along the bottom, you'll see these rentable conference rooms, uh, that are available to the patrons. Visualizations, this is basically showing what the facility upgraded would look like with, uh, signage on the facility. Uh, you can see the, uh, the, uh, clearance bar in the beginning where you set, begin to set the, uh, the, uh, one-way traffic through for the drive-through. Um, also, this, uh, most of the facility facade is, uh, is the original facade of the building, but it's being painted, uh, colors have been re- reviewed, uh, by the staff, and there's no issues with those. But it's gonna be basically a total refresh of the building on the outside, as well as some nice signage. Complete, uh, remodel, re- complete remodel of the interior. Uh, again, uh, you can see in the background sort of the queuing, or the area for the, um, for the cells, uh, counter and the menu board, and then the open seating area. Again, you can see, uh, another perspective from the other side of the, uh, looking from south to north, you can see, again, the retail, uh, menu board, the serving counter, and then, and some of the open seating area. And then with that, I'll let the staff proceed.
Thank you, this is Rodney.
All right, so, as the petitioner mentioned, the, uh, subject before you this evening is the amendment to the planned unit development, the special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through, and then a variation as well for the property located at four West Rand Road. The site is about thirty thousand square feet, and it is currently zoned B two, uh, in our general business district. So, this is the zoning relief that is being requested, as the petitioner has already gone through. Uh, we will talk a little bit more about the parking in just a moment. Um, these are some of the images you've already seen. Uh, as the petitioner indicated, the design commission did take a look at the proposed improvements to the exterior of the building. Uh, they were generally supported, they, they did ask for a color scheme to be submitted, uh, and for staff to take a look at that. And I believe they've been working with our architect on the color scheme. But overall, the design commission was quite pleased with what's being proposed. You've seen a lot of these images in terms of the site plan and the, uh, traffic flow on the site. Uh, this is a parking exhibit, and, and no need for you to, uh, get overwhelmed by all the details. But as the petitioner indicated, when they look at the parking within their individual lot, they are meeting the village's parking requirement. However, because this is part of a larger shopping center, when we evaluate parking, we evaluate the parking for the entire center. Because I think, as we've all experienced, if we can't find parking on the site we wanna go to, we might just park somewhere else in the parking field. And so, there is a, a possibility, um, that that could occur. So, we took a look at the, the full, uh, site, which is the Arlington Plaza Shopping Center, and the existing uses there and their parking requirements. And you may recall, um, several months ago, the village board considered a variation for this plaza for, uh, urban air. And at that time, um, we were aware that Cargo Coffee was coming in, but we did not have a final footprint and floor plan for Cargo Coffee. So, we had estimated what the parking requirement would be. And the village board approved a variation of seven parking stalls for urban air, uh, which resulted in one hu- one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine parking spaces for the entire center. Now that we have, uh, the footprint for Cargo Coffee and we're able to calculate that, um, what we have determined is that the resulting variation that's necessary for the entire shopping center is actually fifteen parking stalls. So, the total amount of parking that's going to be provided is the same number, but the variation is actually slightly larger than what's already been granted. And so, that's why it's before you again this evening. But again, in terms of what they anticipate for their use, they can accommodate it within their individual lot. So, the plan commission did, of course, consider this request, they did unanimously recommend approval of their request. Um, again, the conditions you see here are pretty standard for this type of development, so no concerns. And then the motion before the board this evening was to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare the final documents granting the zoning relief that's been requested, subject to the recommended conditions that are set forth in tonight's agenda packet.
Okay, well, thank you for, uh, both presentations, um, I'll go to the board, uh, for any questions, starting down here. Trustee Santa Maria?
It's more of a comment than a question, but, um, I think this space looks great, I'm really excited. I live on the north end and love coffee, so this would just add, um, to my routine. And I really love the idea of offering community space for people to come and have meetings and a, a space to gather as well, so thank you.
Trustee Dunnington?
Thank you, this space looks really beautiful, um, inside, it was nice to see that picture. I was wondering what the menu is gonna be like, you mentioned pastries, is it just pastries or sandwiches, or?
I'll let, uh, representative from Cargo Coffee speak.
Hi, my name is Moises Sanz, I'm one of the owners of Cargo Coffee. We have, uh, two live stores that are open right now, they're in Bolinbrook, we're inside Myers, uh, if you heard of grocery store. Uh, so, we're inside over there, kinda like same concept of like, um, Target, uh, has Starbucks, so very similar concept, we're going after Myers. Um, so, uh, so, yes, we do have a large menu of like, we have, uh, turkey bacon sandwiches, and we have beef bacon, uh, sandwiches. Uh, so, that's, uh, could be like morning, uh, breakfasts, and we have like lunch menu as well, too, with like egg patties. Um, so, those are like, could be like sandwiches. But as far as like, uh, our, our pastries are all from like France. So, we have like maple, uh, guava, uh, spinach, and feta, and olive, olive and tomato. So, we have like different varieties from like, from sweet and savory. And then our cheesecakes, we all actually, is made up in Italy, um, and it ships out from there. So, we have, uh, a lot of like, uh, pistachio, uh, we have red velvet, uh, tiramisu, um, carrot cake. So, all of those, uh, we'll have those inside, uh, our menu. Um, yeah, and then we have, from the drink side of it, we have the refreshers, um, from energy, uh, or just not like, um, uh, or no, no energy, uh, refreshers. And then obviously, the coffee side of it, uh, all from, actually from Italy as well, too. We have thirteen different countries that we have the, uh, coffee beans, uh, farmed in, and then it goes to Italy to be roasted. So, once it's been ro- roasted from there, it pretty much goes into, um, production of, uh, of shipment, and then it ships out, uh, to us over here, yeah? We use a coffee bean called Kimbo, I don't know if you guys heard of that before, Kimbo. It's very close to like La Vazza. Uh, we used to use the La Vazza brand before, but, uh, um, they were not able to beat our, like, um, our demand, so we had a di- different vendor that we use now, it's called Kimbo, yeah?
Sounds delicious, thank you.
Sure, sure.
One other question for staff, will we be, um, approving signs and like the menu board at a later time? Or is that all approved at this time?
Uh, that was not part of their initial package, so they'll be coming back through the permit process for that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks. Trustee Zick?
Um, thank you, President Protem, um, I, I, I drive past this all the time, this area all the time, so I'm really gonna be happy to see that storefront, uh, i- is finally gonna be taken care of. And I, I like the idea with the conference rooms, too. I think that's, I think it's a good idea for, for that, for that area. Um, and President Protem, if I can, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting the zoning relief for consideration at a future board meeting for PC twenty-four dash two oh twenty-three, PUD amendment, and special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through, and the zoning variance requested and subject to the recommended conditions all as set forth in the agenda for tonight's board meeting.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zick, second by trustee Mangue Nero, uh, any other questions?
Uh, just comments, I think, if I may, I'm really excited to see you guys there. I, I did take a look at your menu, I've got it up on my iPad right now, it looks really interesting. You actually asked the question that I had, which was about how the, the food was gonna be prepared. It's all gonna be served, uh, delivered and then heat and serve on-site.
Correct, yeah, we have like a, um, like a turbo, um, toaster oven, um, so that cooks it. Uh, but we don't need a hood any, for that, 'cause all pretty much pre-made already, they're already cooked. We're all just mainly just warming it up and kinda melting the cheese and, um, on the bread, that's mainly what we're using it for.
And I love that you're setting up shop directly across the street from Starbucks.
Yeah, yeah, and that's actually what, um, what Starbucks would, to comment on, uh, what you said about, uh, conference rooms. Uh, Starbucks is what their agenda right now is, like, they're taking a lot of that out, like, right by my house, and I live in Addison. Um, and one of the Starbucks over there, they're actually taking out the seating, they did a full remodel, they took out the seating, and they made it just as a drive-through, um, and, um, so that's kinda what we're trying to bring back. Uh, we are trying to bring back the conference to, to kinda come, people like study, or if they wanna, um, uh, book the space for their own, uh, meetings. Um, so, that's kinda what we're trying to bring back to people, to come in and, and enjoy the space. And that's why we kinda built it out with a lot of seating, uh, and something, somebody to enjoy with that tree in the middle. Uh, so, we're try, having that, uh, to kinda, um, inviting space. Um, so, a little bit modern, a little bit rustic look, 'cause our name is Cargo, so it has like very similar as a cargo ship. like very similar as a cargo ship, a container, so very similar that you will see those, some of those things inside the area space that we have, but with a little bit of the modern look, so that's kind of what we're going for. So we have total six that we're working on, we have two live stores, if you guys are ever in the Boldenbrook area, please stop by, and let me know, and I'll definitely, you know, hook you guys up. But yeah, so we have that, we have St. Charles and Elgin, those are also inside Myers, and so we're just trying to kind of elaborate and try to go into a lot of, and then our last store that I did not mention, which is Olden Park, that's also, we took over Starbucks, so we have a drive-through already ready, those are the two stand-alones, Arlington Heights, and then our Olden Park, those are our stand-alones, but inside, four of them are inside Myers.
All right. And thank you for bringing this business to Arlington Heights, and you're gonna do great.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Is it, Moises was your name?
Yes, Moises, yes.
Thank you for doing this, this is great, I'm very excited for this development in our community, I'm proud of you guys, this looks awesome, I wish you all the best, welcome to Arlington Heights.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Trustee Labads?
And I also want to say thank you for coming to Arlington Heights, and also, this will go a long way in beautifying that area, which has been around for, that shopping center's been around for a very long time, and this will really help. I think especially having those little meeting rooms is gonna be nice, I know the Panera across the way has this very small room that I've been in, and it's really tiny, so this will, this will be nice. I do have a question, you mentioned the ones, the Cargos in the area that exist and that you're working on, is this from other parts of the country, did it start some, where did it start?
Yes, good question, so it is a franchise, it is a franchise, they're based out in Miami, they have about, I think, four live stores over there in the Florida area, two in Tampa, one in Tampa, to be exact, one is in St. Pete's, St. Petersburg, and then they have like two in Miami, and then Orlando, Orlando they have, where I think they're creating one right now. But there's Michigan, they got two, so they're up and coming, they have foreign in California area, and also like our group that we're working under, we actually took over one, or we acquired a store actually in Long Beach, so I just came back last week to set that store up. And then just on Saturday, I came back from Tampa, so we took over that store as well too. So it's a, it's a up and coming, but not all of us is under our group, but we're slowly, slowly trying to get around over here, and mainly, mainly trying to get in on, and then try to see how we can impact, you know, the community, where we want to go, we want to kind of bring in, you know, good coffee back, and that's kind of what our goal is. But yeah, and what you commented about the meeting room space, that's exactly what we're trying to, you know, bring back, to kind of have an inviting space, which as I said before, yeah.
Great, well, thank you, and I wish you all the best.
Sure.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, and another one to also add is that we have another business also in Arlington Heights, and it's Amazon, the DSP, we're at the station, so we have a, that we have around, I think, 109 employees over there, so we've been in Arlington Heights, we want to grow in Arlington Heights, so we appreciate you guys helping us out in that, so we're trying to give back to the community as well too, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I too am extremely excited, the schematics look great, and it's gonna certainly look a lot better than that building with the brown paper on it.
Yes, yes, we're trying to push hard to start, yeah.
Are you gonna own that facility, or just rent it?
So right now, we're renting, but I'm hoping we can talk to the landlord to potentially buy that space, 'cause he is interested of potentially letting go of that outlawed, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, and my question, and I think I understand this, so you said you're not brewing any coffee on-site?
No, no, no.
Are you selling packaged coffee through the drive-through?
Yeah, so we can, we can, we do have the packaging that we will like sell, but mainly what we're doing is we do have like the coffee machine, special machine, it will be grinded and just put it inside that, and then we will, you know, make it inside the coffee machine.
Okay, but no package, good?
No package, good, yeah, 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 correct.
And then, without brewing then, you're bringing in the coffee already?
Brewed, correct.
Brewed, and then just warming it up in the machines?
No, so it's, it, so it's, it's in beans, we will be grinding it over there, and then we will, we will be making the coffee like fresh, it will not be like, is that the question? I'm sorry.
Well, I got the impression you said you're not gonna be brewing any coffee.
Oh, uh.
Roasting.
Roast, yeah.
Okay, you're not roasting, but you are gonna be brewing it.
Correct, yes, I am gonna be brewing it, roasting is, happens in Italy, Italy, yeah, sorry.
All right, that's where I was a little confused.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
All right, well, we have, we have a motion in a second, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions on this project? Seeing none, I would, we have the motion in a second, roll call?
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Mangue Nero?
Hi.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
President Protem Schwingback?
Yes.
So the motion carries, and again, the final ordinance will be considered at that November 3 Village Board meeting, so congratulations.
Appreciate it, thank you guys.
Yep, thanks. No other comments, management records, so at this point in time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn?
I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second. We don't need a roll call on this one, just a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And there's no noes, motion carries. Meeting will be over, thank you.